Good evening, folks. That means we're ready to start. Kathy, would you lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
I'll do leadings to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I understand there's an event this evening in Erie County, so we'll try to move this along as quickly as possible. So let's get underway and...
I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight, December 6.
All in favor? Aye. One point oh four.
Let's approve the meeting minutes for the meeting on November 15, 2021.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. One point oh five.
I entertain a motion to approve the special board meeting minutes by November 17, 2021.
All in favor? Aye. unanimous? Thank you. So we'll go right to students.
Okay, I'm just gonna stay here today.
Okay.
Winter sports have begun. The next events for all sports are tomorrow, so every single diversity team is playing tomorrow, which is crazy. The annual girls' basketball program, Coaches vs. Cancer Tournament, we host this weekend, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. The Geneseo teams play Friday night, the other two teams play Thursday night, and then we play our consolation championship on Saturday afternoon. Concert season is beginning. The chorus concert is Wednesday in the gym. The band concert is next Monday, the 13th. Orchestra is the Monday following that, the 20th. I just stole half of Mrs. Flowers' presentation. And the acapella and jazz band concert is in January. The student council is hosting a holiday spirit week next week, leading up to winter break the following week. And our first school dance since COVID is next Saturday, December 18, at the gym. The senior class, I have to promote myself. So the senior class has a fundraiser tomorrow night at Applebee's, the takeout fundraiser. You order everything online, promo code DOINGGOOD. All day at Applebee's, so, yeah. Are there any questions?
If you take out at Applebee's and you call on the phone, should you say DOINGGOOD with a code? Or just say it's a fundraiser for the senior class?
Yeah, if you just told them it's part of the senior class fundraiser, as long as it's takeout.
Okay.
As we take out.
Great. Terrific.
Any other questions?
Code is DOINGGOOD?
DOINGGOOD with one G, so D-O-I-N-G-O-O-D.
Thank you. Jamie, you're up.
Again, the middle school is also hosting the winter dance. Just ours is at six to eight, when the high school is later. We also have a holiday jussup week from the 13th through the 17th. Page Turners has a competition Wednesday, the 8th, this Wednesday, and that will be in York. For sports, the seventh and eighth grade girls' basketball is having a good season. We have another game tomorrow in Leroy. And does anyone have questions?
Excellent. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well done. Well done.
Okay. Brings us to presentations. Three oh one. The course guide and college application process.
Yes, thanks for having us tonight. Mrs. Sholen and Mrs. Holt will be giving presentations. Mrs. Sholen will be talking about the college application process, and Mrs. Holt will be talking about the course selection process. So thank you for all your work and all that you do. Mrs. Sholen, we'll turn it over to you. And at the end, if there are any questions, please feel free to ask them and answer them to the best of our ability.
All right. Okay, so the college application process. Here at Geneseo, we really took it off, I would say, January of junior year, but it truly begins long before that. It begins in students' homes, around the dinner table. It begins with conversations that teachers are having in classrooms all the way up through, and definitely the work that Becky Kay does in the elementary school, Theresa Holt does in the middle school. So by the time they get to junior year, they've heard a lot of this, certainly not in this great detail, but these are familiar concepts and terms for them. So we begin with classroom presentations, a parent night, and individual planning meetings. Some things that we talk about at these presentations and meetings would be factors in the admissions process, so courses that students take, the grades they earn. Taking a rigorous program of study, students are given a copy of their high school transcript so that they can see exactly what colleges are going to be looking at the following fall when the student is applying to college. We talk about things like the college search, how to really go about that, looking for colleges that are a good fit for the student, schools that are realistic options, some that are more of a reach, and some that are, at least one or two, that are a backup plan. I go into U.S. history classes, and we spend a full period doing an actual college search. So the college board has a great search tool that I really kind of go through step by step with students, and then kind of send them on their way to do a little bit more independent-like work. We regroup in March when we take a field trip to the National College Fair. Obviously, not during COVID, but typically at the Rochester Convention Center, there is a national college fair with hundreds of colleges that we take the junior class to. And I also encourage students to start their campus visits at that time, getting on campus to colleges. The past year, there have been lots of virtual visit opportunities as well that students take advantage of. And then in June, you can see, but it says letters of recommendation and brag sheets. So this is really kind of leading into the college application process that we begin in the fall of senior year. Students take the time in June to request from teachers their letters of recommendation, and they fill out a form called a brag sheet, which is them bragging about themselves that then can help teachers to write those letters for them. So then that brings us to senior year. Over the summer, in August, I send a mailing home that includes a college application timeline. It's something that I have developed over the years, and it's kind of a pacing guide, week by week. It's about four pages long, and it tells students exactly what they need to do, week by week, to stay on target for college application deadlines. There's a disclaimer right at the top that says, this is kind of a general guideline for you, but each college might have their own specific deadlines, so, you know, be sure that you're checking with schools specifically. They also get another copy of their transcript with that August mailing just to double check, make sure everything looks accurate, and again, so that they can see exactly what will be going on to colleges. Then in September, the presentations in classrooms. I have a senior parent night, and again, those individual planning meetings. We talk about their final list of schools that they'll apply to, typically about five to eight colleges. I encourage them to visit campus, revisit campus. We talk about what college application platform they'll use. For most students, that's the Common Application, and the components that will go into that. I team up with the English 12 teachers, and we do a full lesson on the college application essay. So students have, they get some examples, and they have a chance to write their own essay and then get feedback from the English teachers, and myself as well, from a college admissions perspective. We really dive into financial aid, even in September, but then we have Financial Aid Night in October. And the Rochester area colleges, 14 colleges in the Rochester area, come to school in October and do a college fair for us here. The goal of the college application process is to be totally done by Thanksgiving. College deadlines are typically January 1st, February 1st, even into March, but we like students to be really kind of early birds. The early bird gets the worm in many cases, so we try to keep them on target to kind of be ahead of schedule, and then it just kind of takes the pressure off, and they can enjoy the other aspects of senior year. So here are the list of colleges that our students have actually enrolled at over just the past two years. You can see that they are applying far and wide, they're getting accepted far and wide, and they're actually attending colleges all over the U.S., certainly many, many schools in New York State, but they really go all over. Good mix of two-year colleges, four-year colleges, trade schools on this list. And so this is something that I'm very proud of, that, you know, students aren't, they don't really have tunnel vision. They're looking at all their options, they're considering all their options, and they're really making choices that are the best for them. So that's really the goal, is for students to find those schools that are a good fit for them. And then it's not just me that's doing this work. We're really fortunate to have interested and motivated students here at Geneseo who really are excited and want to go on after high school and continue their educations. Definitely supportive families. The Junior Parent Night and the Senior Parent Night that I do gets a really strong turnout every year, and I'm grateful for that. We have awesome teachers here who are definitely teaching rigorous coursework, starting early on but continuing through high school, that prepare students well, and that's, you know, definitely the main factor in college admissions. Teachers will also write many, many letters of recommendation to support applications. Pam Hammond is wonderful. She and I are a great team, you know, checks and double checks. We've got our spreadsheets and our files and our systems, and we make sure that every T is crossed and I is dotted, and things get where they need to be, like I said, well advanced, in advance of deadlines. And last but not least, not on this list, but Theresa Holt does a great job, like I said, kind of laying the groundwork and having these conversations early on so that when students get to me, this isn't like a new and foreign concept to them. So that's it, and then that's it. Any questions? All right.
I would like to just echo how overwhelming for parents it can be with the whole college application processing. And the organization done out of, with Pam Suzanne in that office for the college application process in specific is tremendous. It's good to know, because the last thing you want to do is get a call from an upset parent that their son or daughter's application was not filled out in a timely manner, therefore they missed an opportunity to attend the university of their choice. So kudos to the job you guys do. Mr. Tannal, do you have a question?
I guess that's a focus on college, but is there also another focus on careers in general, or?
Yeah, for sure. So, yeah, this presentation, you know, definitely was about the college application process, but yes, we have, you know, again, from K-12 right on through a solid career development program that includes things like job shadowing. Megan Harvey has recently taken on some luncheon learns and other programs to expose students to employers. And then really, our BOCs and the career and tech programs that they have there have been tremendous in exposing students to a wide variety of, not only careers, but just kind of paths for their post-secondary plans, so, yeah.
And there's been a tremendous uptick in the trades right now, which is a good thing. So we have the highest percentage, or our largest class is our junior class in years. I don't think we've had a class class of 100 since I've been here, and about 50%, maybe a little under 50%.
No, it's actually a little bit over 50%.
A little bit over 50% are attended, so that just speaks volumes to having student, you know, offerings and careers and focuses for all students.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Mrs. Holt?
All right, thank you.
We'll be talking about how we get to this stage.
So course selection is a process that's actually, you know, starts early on in the year, and then it kind of ties into what they've been doing. So really, we're doing that all right along. So I'm gonna start with high school. So starting in October, November, team leaders and teachers are asked to submit and make any changes to the course guide. So that includes new course proposals. You know, each team needs to see if they want to change anything or offer something new based on student interest or teacher interest or need. So that's done every fall. And then changes in course proposals are reviewed and approved. In December, right about now, the course guide is being finalized and approved. Counselors will start asking teachers for course recommendations, and then recommendations are discussed as student progress is evaluated. So it's hard to evaluate students really on one marking period, so it is an ongoing process. And then, I would also like to give kudos to Pam. She does all of her scheduling and sends out notices to parents when their student progress reviews are. We do send course selection sheets for the upper-level grades, where they do have more choices. So the course guide has a lot of information, and the course option sheets give like a summary, so it's easier to kind of read through what the course titles are. So we send those home as well, and then we also have been putting them in the Google Classroom. Then in January and February, I start with ninth graders, and Suzanne starts with 11th graders. We go into the classrooms to discuss those course options. So when we do that, hopefully kids have received the mailing and they've looked at some of the course options. And then we meet with them for their annual progress reviews. We discuss their goals, their interests, and course recommendations. Parents and guardians are invited to attend. We did quite a bit of Zoom last year. And then course requests are actually put into our system's school tool. In February and March, we do, we meet with eighth and 10th grade. We go into the classroom. I start talking about high school and the bigger picture. And then same thing, we notify parents of those meetings. After all of this is done, and everything has been put into school tool in terms of how many requests, we sit down with the principal, Mr. Salatell, and we look at those numbers. If a course may not be offered due to low enrollment or some other reason, we would go back to those students and relook at their course requests. So it's an ongoing process, and again, you know, teachers, as marking periods happen, we would continue to look at progress. In the middle school, the timeline is a little bit later. We like to give them time and decision-making. It's hard to make decisions when you're a little bit in about certain things, so we like to have as much data as we can on students. So in April, I ask the math and science teachers to give recommendations for acceleration, and those are separate guidelines or separate programs. The guidelines and the letters are sent home to those who are recommended. In May, I do classroom presentations to sixth and seventh graders. We talk about what will happen at the next grade level, what kind of exploratory classes they will take. And then sixth graders are asked to pick a world language for 7th grade. As you may know, they have to pick Spanish or French. They have to take that for a minimum of two years. Some students do qualify for a LOET exemption. LOET means language other than English. But we start that, and then they also have their music choices, so they can choose with band, chorus, orchestra, and some of the extra music programs. Those all happen in the spring. So in terms of, you know, what guides us, our American School Counseling Association, advising and kind of appraising student progress is part of what the American School Counseling Association recommends that we do. So we do that based on what we're seeing in students, what their abilities, their interests, their achievement are, and kind of help them along. So I'm currently meeting with sixth graders, and I've already started asking, you know, what are you thinking about for the future? Do you know if you want to go to college? Do you know if you want to go right to work? And some of them have already thought about those things, so that's nice. And then also too, you know, part of our job is individual student planning, and we collaborate with others, the administrators, teachers, families. We want to make sure that kids are getting college and career ready. We want to support them in what their goals are. And it starts, you know, right from the beginning, and we continue that sixth grade and up. And then just in terms of what guides us as counselors, you know, we have to respect students' self-determination. It's important that we listen to students and help support them in what their goals are. We encourage rigor. So if they want to go to college, we do advise them. In terms of what colleges are looking for, NAAC is the National Association of College Admissions Counselors. And so as you scroll down, you'll see some of New York State requirements kind of cover this, like we do have to have four credits of English. But one of the things that we encourage is rigorous math. Colleges, particularly four-year colleges, want you to have four-year math. They strongly recommend four years of math, not taking a year off in math. At least three lab sciences, social studies. New York State covers, we have to have four. And then at least two to four years, if you're looking at a typical four-year college. Some colleges, technical colleges, might not require that. So we use that as a guide too, when we listen to what students' goals are. We like to encourage their interests, building skills, empowering them, particularly first-generation students, whether it's their parents, you know, didn't graduate from high school, didn't go to college, to try something new. We try to encourage kids, and we do this through asking about their extracurriculars. Once they hit 9th grade, they start doing an activity resume. So we try to help kids find opportunities. And then, of course, our job is to advocate for students. We want teachers, or we want students to achieve what their goals are. So sometimes students do want to challenge themselves, whether it's, you know, they weren't recommended for acceleration and they want to try it. We generally err in letting students challenge themselves. So aspects of the course selection process happen throughout the year. It can be direct contact with students, much of it is, and then also too, just behind the scenes, kind of encouraging them, looking for opportunities, and talking with teachers and administrators. I think that is a deeper all view on the course selection process. Any questions for me?
Do any of the students, do we get any requests for something other than Spanish or French?
Yes, sometimes we do. American Sign Language has been asked about. Not all the time, not on a high volume frequency, but yes, that has been asked. Nothing since, I mean, that tends to be, that's the one that's jumping out at me.
Are there other ones that jump out at you that they request that we don't offer?
No, not that I can...
Languages?
Yeah.
No, not languages, just in general.
Oh, courses?
Yeah.
Well, my, the students I work with are young, so I can't think, they're, when I'm meeting with them, they're just so interested in all that they have to offer and the fact that they do have some choices. So I think sometimes the amount of choices, because we're a small school, who I, we think, I think we offer a lot. So I haven't had that a lot.
The tricky part, given our school, we do offer a wealth of college courses. We offer a wealth of, because GCC credit, AP courses. And then, given what we just talked about with our junior class, a lot of students that are interested in the trade. So when you, and a lot of those courses are singleton. So we have more AP courses than schools twice our size. So it's a challenge for students to be able to pick it. You have to pick and choose. And we will go back to the drawing board on a schedule, many, many times, where most schools would just cut it off, say, well, right now you gotta choose. So we'll go back and try to accommodate to the best of our ability, but sometimes there's just not enough room in our schedule. So we try to be creative. Over the years, we've had students take, go to SUNY Geneseo. If they've completed all the math we have, or if they've completed, they want to take a higher level of English, we'll work with them on it. Accelerate U, we have students that can sign up for that. I think last year, John, we had, how many in the year before? We had several students that...
It was definitely a tick up, but after looking at the numbers, we're probably 15 to 20 courses that we don't offer here that they tuck through in a hotline interface.
And so those are just great opportunities for students. Mr. Tannal, you brought up foreign language. Years ago, we looked at Mandarin, because we thought that that was the way it really go. And then we found out, we did have a few students interested in it, and a lot of those families were already taking their students to break, and I believe has a strong program on weekends. So there just wasn't enough interest, and that's a challenging piece.
But I think you just hit on the key points there. Is there isn't an option for them if they choose to?
Yeah, we'll help explore those options and give them the resources or enroll them in a course. The problem is, again, you only have eight periods in a day. We have, many of our students don't have a break in a day. And what's really special about Geneseo, our students also love the arts. So they still want to take the arts. They want to take the technology course, they want to take all that. And if you're taking five AP courses, it's hard. Because again, a singleton means, that's the only time it's offered. And in eight periods, if we have 20 singletons throughout the day, you end up having to choose where you're gonna be. So it's a challenge, but through the hard work of everybody, they try to make it work to each student's needs.
And I'm, just to kind of tag on to the Accelerate U, because that's fairly new. They do have some outstanding course options. We have found that the best case for students is to have time in their schedule, and it is very independent. So I think you have to look at their independent learning skills, because there isn't an instructor right there with you. But they do have some pretty high-interest courses. So, yeah, I think always looking for opportunities for students. And we recently had a career day. I think that's an area too, the world is changing, as we know. And so opportunities, you know, one of the career day speakers was a former Geneseo student, and her job didn't exist when she was in high school. So I always tell kids, you really don't know what's gonna be out there by the time you get into the workforce. So you want to, you know, challenge yourself, try new things. That's, those are skills that you can develop without necessarily having to have all the right courses. You know, it's a process, so hopefully that helps.
Wonderful.
And the last thing I'd like to highlight, be remiss if I didn't say, the support of the community, and certainly Board of Education in one area that was brought up a little while ago, what colleges look for. We are one of the few schools that required that four-year math requirement, but it's so beneficial. And the majority of our students do take advantage of that. So thank you for your continued support of that, because, you know, when budgets get tough, that is something that could go. And our math department feels it's a high priority, and it has been. We have students that come back to us from college and they say, thank goodness we didn't take a year off, because it is, it's that powerful. And they're taking some advanced math courses. Really just very beneficial, and it's a big plus for our students. That could be that extra little advantage when you're dealing with a very competitive school, whether you get in or whether you don't get in. So thank you for your continued support of that.
Absolutely.
Well, and really, you know, I was part of a Zoom meeting today from 4:30 until 5:30 through the Geneseo Valley School Board Association. If you saw, it was the Take a Moment series. And it was, what this second series was about was the social-emotional needs of our students in our schools. And, you know, one of the things that they just repeatedly talked about is that the mental health services that are available to our students outside of school are decreasing. We all know that the healthcare field is suffering significant weaknesses and shortages, and so is the mental health field. And so on top of all this college and career readiness and course selection and working with the students on their academic fees, the school counselors here are extremely busy meeting the needs of the students, and just want to commend our counseling staff, because that is a, that's a huge pull. And they do a very, very nice job of meeting both of those aspects. So, thank you. And Teresa also talked about the Career Day, which was the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, and many, many positive comments about the Career Day. So that doesn't happen without a lot of work and planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Many of them were graduates too, which I always think is fun to see where they, what they end up doing career-wise.
Very well, by the way, a lot of them.
Some of them we're a little jealous of.
Yeah.
Teresa and I did a lot of work on that years ago, that Career Day.
Yes.
Very nicely done.
Yes, and I think...
You made it easy for the transportation department.
Yes, and as we kind of move forward, I think looking for how to meet the career exploration needs in a COVID world is continuing, that's ongoing.
Is it possible for you to share the program and the speakers you had from that day?
The Career Day? Oh, yeah, sure, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we heard from Mrs. Holt, now we'll hear from Mr. Holt.
Have you guys had too much of the Holtz right now? I've been told I have to keep a brief, because there is a ballgame... First thing I wanted to talk about really quickly was our, our new website has been live for about a month right now, so I just wanted to spotlight a couple of things on it. It, without a doubt, is still a work in progress, so we're always looking for feedback and ways to make it better. A couple of different pieces. There's an app that goes with it that's starting to get marketed right now that is, it's different than the actual website, so don't, don't think that the mobile app that you can download from the, you know, Apple Store and the Google Play Store is exactly the same as the website. The mobile version is pretty much what you see up on the, up on the screen, but the app is going to be different. Just scrolling down a little bit, I know we talked about some of these things, but we try to spotlight some of the heavily things from our main site on this spot. A couple of news items that are coming up, we try to keep this as current as possible. I do want to talk about this one, it's coming up tomorrow night in the auditorium that people haven't heard about, it's called Y21. Rob Levy from SUNY Geneseo, the name's called...
Healthy Communities.
Healthy Communities and Campus. They tried to... Healthy Communities and Campus. They, they tried to work with the area community on substance abuse types of issues. So it's going to be entertaining, there's going to be a step dance team from SUNY Geneseo and a cappella group, and also panel presentation from SUNY Geneseo students about why 21 is an important age and some of the impacts that underage substance abuse has. So it is going to be livestreamed on our, on our website and our social media as well, but that's coming up tomorrow night. So we try to keep this as active as possible, with news stories that are coming up. And there's also live feed of things that have already happened at, at the building. But, you know, it's a challenge to always find, you know, the content that you do want to have out there, market all the positive things that we're doing. So definitely take a look, download the app, and let us know your thoughts if you can. So you can get the basic navigation, there's a schools dropdown menu here. So if you go to looking for content that's not there necessarily, if you drop down schools, you can see more elementary specific content, middle school, high school specific content, and then the menu itself will explode into like the full, you know, depth of what the website did. But just wanted to take a minute to talk about, about that component of it. We are going to start sending out messages through it. We, we did a couple of social media tweets and Facebook posts through Aptity, but we're going to start using it as an all-call system this year as well. We haven't opened that up, we're still using Blackboard for that, but that will be coming, so be looking for that. Another piece that was marketed on that front page, and you probably heard through emails that were sent out to families, the Digital Equity Survey. New York State asked all public schools to get families to submit information for every single one of their students, as far as what access to technology they have at, at their home. So we sent that out, trying to get parents to log into School Tool to get that information. And they didn't really want schools to report it, they wanted it to come directly from the families, which I, I understand, but you know, the reasoning behind that, it does make it challenging to get those results back. And it's not like a, like a, just an open-ended Google survey where it's really easy to, to click and answer. We did pick School Tool to get that information in there for a couple of different reasons. One, School Tool always, already will flow data based on students, our student information system up to New York State every single week. So since every single student is already in School Tool, it's already, that mechanism is already there. A little bit cumbersome as far as getting into the survey, but we looked at it as a benefit, because middle school, high school parents, I think, use the, the portal a lot more than the elementary parents. They look at it to see what their grades are, what assignments are coming up. But elementary students also, their, their report cards in there, their attendance in there. So we wanted to use this as not just a, you know, a mechanism to get that, those survey results, as far as what access, you know, families have the technology at home, but also to get them into that portal at an earlier age, so that they could start, you know, seeing more information there. Third thing I want to talk about was our technology plan. That's going to be due to New York State at the end of this school year. So we're going to be looking for stakeholder input through meetings, both, you know, teachers, students, parents, community members. It will have to be submitted to New York State by the end of the school year, so you'll have a full presentation as far as what that plan looks like. But every few years, the state wants, wants that, and now more than ever. I think people have seen, you know, with the amount of money that has been spent towards technology, let's look at what this plan looks like over the next five years, as far as what we want to prioritize at Geneseo. Lastly, I want to talk about some of the technology purchase that already happened this school year. Three hundred Chromebooks came in, like, everyone was talking about the supply chain, how long it was going to take, everything to come in. Sometimes when it rains, it pours, and it all comes in at once. And we're kind of at that moment now. Right before the school year started, we had the, the student Chromebooks come in, and, and that was absolutely pivotal, as far as starting the year with, with more current Chromebooks for any student that needed. We have a new iMac lab that's going to be used in the middle school, high school for art production, it's almost ready to install, it'll probably happen over Christmas break is when we're going to put that in there. And just last week, we got new Microsoft Surface tablets for our staff, that we're, we're starting to get ready to deliver out to, you know, the faculty. I'm trying to convince my partner in crime now, Marcy, to dress up like Sam and possible run through the halls.
There you go.
But those conversations haven't really gone well. But there is a lot happening at once, so we're, we're developing new sign-off sheets for faculty, so they are getting their devices, as far as, they've looked at our acceptable use policy, they've gone through the trainings, as far as what to be cautious of, as far as phishing emails. But now that, you know, when we were in this pandemic, a lot of faculty were using their own personal device, everyone was doing, how many they could possibly do to make these connections happen. And we fully appreciate, you know, the, the, you know, that amount of work and capital that people put into it. We're a lot more comfortable, it's a, you know, Geneseo central device, that we know the updates are happening, the virus protection's there, and that if we did have to close, we could send the devices home with the faculty, and they'd have a very current, updated, you know, computer that they're going to be connecting back and forth. So in the sign-off sheet, it kind of goes through some of, some of those expectations, as far as it will be on campus, to get updates every, so, you know, you know, whenever the person's in the building, to make sure that security is on those machines. But it'll take a while to push those out to all the classrooms, we're gonna, you know, we're almost finished giving them all already, but by Christmas, we're probably gonna have, you know, close to half of them out there. So we'll, we'll be following trainings after that, but a lot of pieces will be happening. Another piece, a product that we're looking at is the increasing our wireless capacity here. This, they're basically going to get delivered within the next week, and we're gonna have to start putting those up. So like everything, sometimes everything's backwards, and then all of a sudden it comes through, you know, in a hurry. So the next couple of months will be fairly busy, for sure. I know that was a lot, and I spoke very quickly, I was told I have to.
We understand.
They're gonna be busy.
Any questions, though, or can I elaborate on these pieces of that?
Cover it.
Thanks, everyone.
You got it. Thanks, John.
And Regina did take part of my presentation, but that's okay, you know, because I have a little bit different perspective on, on my presentation, so I'll pull up here in just a second.
There you go.
So as Regina said, winter sports did start. And just a little bit different perspective, last year, we were limited on the number of spectators that we could allow when we had our inside activities and sports. This year, we are not limiting our audiences as of yet. But there is concern from, not only from the school's perspective, but also from the officials, about the proper mask wearing of both spectators and athletes. We did have some minor issues during the volleyball season, which Mr. Salatell really mostly had to deal with, as he was a volleyball parent. But that is a concern as we move forward, because we received, a lot of the ADs received an email from the officials stating that if they felt that students weren't properly wearing their mask, and that there was a true health concern, that they were not required to officiate and, and have that, that contest continue. So hoping, I, I really feel strongly that our athletes will not violate this. They were tremendous about wearing their face masks last year. But if some of you attended any athletic events last year, you saw the differences in schools and what the expectation was. So hopefully, we will all get on board and follow the rules and wear our masks properly, because it really is important this year. We are seeing, you know, an increase in numbers, and so it'd be nice if everyone protects everyone else. Speaking of that, our COVID numbers. So these numbers were as of Friday. They, these numbers do change over the weekend. You know, at any given time, either Mike or Kelly can send me an email and say that they were notified to be their positive student or staff, and then we go through our contact tracing protocol. But on Friday, we have one positive student, and we had twelve quarantined students. Then in the middle school, one positive student and eleven quarantined students, in the middle school, high school. So when you look at our district totals, obviously two positive staff, twenty-three quarantined students, and one positive staff, and three quarantined staff members. So you know that we did start our test-to-stay program, and this really, it ebbs and flows based on if there's been school contacts identified, and if the parents have then agreed to participate in the program. So last week, we didn't test very many people at all. Monday was our first day back, that we had to test a number of students, but then the rest of the week, we didn't have anyone in the program. But twenty-two families have been offered this program and participated. And from that program, we did not have anyone tested positive. So, you know, really speaking to our students wearing their mask and our cleaning and disinfecting protocols here in the school, because we're, knock on wood, not, not seeing it. And we will continue to offer this program to keep our kids in school. So it's a very positive program for us. John, can you click on that? So we talked about our automated floor scrubber, and actually, I just received a building maintenance magazine that said, the automated, automated floor scrubber is saving schools millions. And so this is our new headless floor cleaner. Cleaning our gyms at 7:00 AM, it's in our gym's clean every morning. But just really want to commend both Ken and Erin for making this recommendation and purchase, because it, it saves us. We, you know, we talk about being short staff, we're short staffed everywhere. And, and our cleaning department is definitely one of them. And this is certainly helping us with, with that expectation. So just really want to thank Erin and Ken for that purchase. Oh, did I make that go again, John? Oh, now I'm going, getting ahead of myself. So we have had our kickoff meeting for our strategic plan. We do have a subcommittee meeting, and so what the subcommittee is going to do is look at multiple sources of data, and they are going to start to develop what type of survey and what questions will be on the survey, as we need to gather information from our stakeholders. So that process is moving forward. Recently, I became a member of Rotary, and, you know, I've only been a member now for two weeks, but have already participated in a community event on Friday, was part of the tree lighting and Christmas caroling ceremony downtown. They talked about it today at lunch, they said it was a very large turnout, they were happy. Santa did come to town, guys, in case you're wondering. So I was a little worried, didn't know if I was on the nice or naughty list, and, and I think I'm okay, because he did come, he talked to me. And, but they went through, I think, five crafts of hot chocolate. So a really good turnout for our families, and just excited to be part of this wonderful organization and giving back to the community. And then, as Regina had pointed out, these are upcoming concerts. I didn't have the a cappella voice concert in January, so I'm glad she was able to do that. But tomorrow, we do have our SUNY Geneseo presentation, and then on the eighth, we have our middle school, high school chorus concert. And then, again, on December ninth, we have our K through two. And just want to really thank our musical department, because putting these on in person has taken a lot of extra effort, and they all said this is what we need to do, and they've done it. So I just really want to thank them. And hopefully you'll get to see them in person, because I'm sure they'll be wonderful like they always are. And with that, any questions?
You didn't mention in the, about Rotary, that you were the speaker today, and I understand it was an exceptionally large gathering, when, when the word came out that you were the speaker. And very nicely done.
Well, thank you. I don't know if that was quite what actually happened. I, I think I was a villain. So maybe they were there for the person who was originally with me, but that's okay. You know, I could say that they came for me. But no, it's, it's a great organization.
Good. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Community relations, do we have a, okay. Then we'll go right to the committee reports, and start with Mike Tenelli, the audit and finance.
Relatively short meeting tonight that we had, really just walking through the budget process, and just getting started in that, in that, you know, regular annual process that we go through in terms of working with all the internal stakeholders first. And over time, we'll probably have a little bit more to report on that than, than tonight. And then, other than that, just hearing a little update from the, the transportation committee.
Great. Questions for the finance committee? Good, thank you. Policy committee, we met two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and reviewed two policies that you'll see on the agenda that are, are there for the first reading. You receive these in your packet. It's basically things that we're already doing. One item and the second one were asked to approve. The old policy said that we would provide physical examinations for new employees. We don't do that. So we pulled that out. We just provide physicals for bus drivers, I think, is the only group. So that's the only, a couple of tweaks on that, first reading on those tonight. And I think we'll meet again in two weeks.
Right.
Okay, any questions? Then, that would go right to, oh, GCEF, I don't know if.
Nothing new to report. I know that they are, I talked to Mrs. Satora, she's going to have Jim Nemett come to probably a January faculty meeting, just to talk about really the differences in what GCF is funding. Because they, they used to do more of those professional development and field trip type activities, but they're also getting into more student hardship type funds. And just really want to talk to the faculty about that as well.
Great, sounds good. Would it be worthwhile for them to give a brief presentation to the board at some point? They do such a great job, you know.
I can invite Jim, Jim would love to do that.
At some, some future meeting.
Okay, good, thanks.
All right, then we go right to personnel.
Under personnel, I'll entertain a consent motion for items 8.02 through 8.10.
Okay. Any questions on any of those items? Good. Everybody good? Okay. Then all in favor of their motion, say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Unanimous, thank you. Go to new business.
Under new business, I'll entertain a consent motion for items 9.02 through 9.12.
Okay. Questions on any of those?
Just wanted to point out that 9.04, the approval of a resolution regarding emergency appointments, this is if in between board meetings, it would benefit the organization for need to appoint and hire an employee in between the board meetings, that that would happen for that brief amount of time. So for example, say, a bus driver had taken and passed their test and had met all the criteria, on a Tuesday, they were able to go on a Wednesday. I could approve their appointment until the next board meeting, and then you would make the, the official resolution at that following board meeting. So it'd only be in between a board meeting session that that would be allowed.
And we made an example of that, the special meeting we had to have to approve the new school bus driver that they really needed the next day. This would eliminate the need for that. But it's still, Cindy's appointments would be contingent on board approval. But it, it's going to help to eliminate those emergency meetings that we have to have from time to time. I think it's a good idea, and it's perfectly legal.
And then 9.09, just excited to be settling our CSEA contract and moving forward with that process. And 9.11, one of the things that we've talked about this year is definitely difficulties with sub coverage and making sure that our classes are covered. And both Mike and Kelly could attest that if we hadn't approved the MOA with the GFA, when we did in regards to having teachers give up their pre-period and get paid to take over and cover another class, we might have been in trouble a few weeks ago. Because that is something that our staff has been great about. Just anytime that there's a need, they're stepping up and saying, we'll cover this class. And you'll see the instructional support staff, that's our teaching aides, they're doing the same. So want to thank them for entering into this agreement with the district as well.
And the board is very grateful to the association for doing that, stepping up. Thank you. Great, I'm very pleased about the CSEA contract, it's a good deal. Okay, any other questions on any of those? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Unanimous, thank you. And then?
Under business office, entertain the consent motion for items 10.02 through 10.06. Thank you to all the donations.
Okay. Any questions or comments on any of those? We good? Okay. Therefore, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Therefore, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Pass, unanimous, thank you. And I think we're done?
We are done.
If there's no other business, I'll-
Entertain a motion to adjourn. I can't see what they, 7:51?
Second. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Meaning adjourn?
Drive safely, go bells.
Thank you, thank you.
Drive slow.
Thank you, yeah.
Well, I saw him, he's like, yeah, maybe it's a baby, I'm like, congratulations. Oh, I know, I hate to say that, it's so true. Well, I mean, it's not coincidence that-
Okay, nicely done.
My ID was strangled. Have a good night, everyone.
Watch the deer, Mrs. Cole.
I will. I will. I'll let Ken get him out of the way before me.
Yeah, right, let him lead the way. Good point.
Have a good night.
No, 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 there's a big question, but you'll be getting more details when we actually go through the actual top plans.
Okay.
You know, we've talked about that, cybersecurity, building safety plans, you know, as far as going through tabletop exercises, we hope this happens, we hope that happens.
Hey, sir, I got a question for you in a second.
Okay, have a good one, okay? Drive safely.
I was going on in the auditorium that were in that list, the live streams?
You know what, I need to look at, like, I know some of them are Lindsay's or going to be in the chat, because you can't put them in.
Okay.
Every single one of them.
Because there were, I wrote down the dates, the 8/13th and the 20th are the dates that I saw up there that you hadn't asked me about and those dates, I don't have anything that you need some of.
Hundred percent, hundred percent, yeah, yeah, I just feel bad asking you all the time, you know what I mean? So, I was going to see a little by little, but yeah, anything that's in the calendar right now, we want to livestream every single one of those events.
Okay, all right, so, yeah, because those were the three that I was like, oh, I didn't, he didn't ask me about those, 8/13th.
Chandr had asked me last week, she's like, do we have anyone to livestream these? That's why I started with those.
Okay, yeah.
$11, sorry.
I just figured I'd ask because you hadn't said anything.
Without a doubt, without a doubt.
So, I wasn't sure if those were being livestreamed or not.
You don't mind though? I mean, I feel that-
The only issue is if something got changed within a certain schedule.
I know, with the sports, you have to do that one, I get that. No, thanks a ton, Cam, appreciate it.
Yeah, just let me know.
Will do.
I'll alternatively mark this day.
Yeah, without a doubt, without a doubt, thanks.